All right, let's go ahead and start the meeting. Everybody welcome to Park Two. And we'll turn the time over for you guys to tell us about Hillcrest Park.
Excellent, thank you Mayor, City Council, we appreciate the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I'd like to make a little update on the Hillcrest Park project. We have part of our design team here, Brent Potter, Cory Shue, the real line design. They will walk us through some of the updates that they've been working on for the last little while. Then we can address any questions that we may have. I'll turn the time to these fine gentlemen, I want you to do your thing. All right, Brent, which one?
I'm gonna have Brent, he's the one that leads all of our meetings on Monday so.
Okay, perfect.
He knows more about it than I do, so he's every little nook and cranny.
Yes, excellent. Uh, you might be easier to raise stand, point things out. So Brent, maybe just to note, we meet as a project team every Monday. So every second Monday we meet in person and then we have an electronic meeting the other weeks. So those meetings generally ninety minutes to a hundred and twenty minutes.
And who, you're in those meetings, you're in those meetings?
Yeah, parks, city side, public works, recreation.
Okay.
WPA, Architectures in North Michigan as well as Bud Mahal, sort of CMG.
It's getting a little bit tricky.
Okay, that's great.
By the way, we 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 do excuse WPA Bruce Fowler, he was already committed to another.
Architect.
Yeah, the architect, thank you, already committed and couldn't make it tonight, but part of the update has to do with him as well.
Thank you.
So will we do our best?
Do your best to cover it.
Right.
What you see on the screen now is the probably looks very familiar to everyone in the room from the last meeting to this meeting. Not many, things have changed on the overall layout of the site, the site amenities. There's been some tweaking of things here and there, splash pad locations, pathways, locations of certain elements such as the hammocking area and there were pathways changed and things shaped or sized a little differently in for a couple of reasons, the one reason was to save some of the existing trees that are on site. There's a large honey locust tree right almost center of the site. The city is currently keeping that tree watered to, it's a really large tree that I think adds a lot of value to the park. And then a a the whole east side of the park along East Popery Line, there's a quite a few trees that we are salvaging on that side as well. The other large difference in the site plan were changes due to fire code and to the architecture of the building. The front of the building had some slight modifications in an effort to reduce costs. So now prior to this renovation, there was a central access, access to a vestibule which has largely been eliminated, which now creates a more of a linear line to the main corridor that we will be, that will be the main entrance to the building. We can go over that and the architecture in a minute. We've also taken into account future wellhouse in this plan, so some of the this section of the site has been modified a little bit. The playground right now, we've got two, the two sections for toddlers, larger kids, older kids. And it's, you can see that it's empty. We have received bids on the design for the playground, which we will be reviewing in a, our final review. Oh, I think it's just gonna be, we'll be reviewing the bids and moving forward with that tomorrow at four P M. Uh, so there's no final design yet for the actual layout of the playground.
Can I ask a question here?
Okay.
Yep.
Last time maybe there was some confusion about our bathrooms and what can all that, did we work out in the bathroom situation?
Yeah, and we can, I can address that once we move on. We have uh, we have three slides, so the next slide is the internal or the, sorry, the the external portion of the, the building. We'll speak to it a little bit. The differences, the main difference would be the center section where there used to be a vestibule, this part of the building came out a little bit more and it was big glass facade. Uh, it's been slimmed down a little bit to primary entrance, secondary entrance and this will be, this will all have trees in front of it, uh, kind of it's a large wall, it needs some green. And then the, the other changes on the bathrooms on this, on eastern side, which is now separated, very clearly separated in between male, female, two separate sections. So yes, that, that has been addressed, thank you. And we can.
That was important to Ladee and I.
Yeah.
So what was the end result that has been addressed?
Here, uh, we can.
It's many women's rooms, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes. So we have two separate entrances with this separation. So entrances from the outside, entrances from the inside, utility closet, which is now they're completely separate and then we have family bathrooms outside of that as well, so there are four.
Right.
Maybe five. But it, it's, it's all been.
How many families got to do so, one, two?
There are two.
Two.
Okay. Accessible from the exterior.
From the exterior.
So one is men and one is women's?
On the family ones, they are not.
But not family, but the others.
The others are men and women, it's cruel.
And then you've got stalls and urinals in the men's and you've got the stalls and women's, so you have the men's. What's that island thing, what's the thing in the?
In the.
Uh, oh, this is just service, that's where all, oops, that's where all the pipes come up.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, it's pretty boring but very essential.
We can, okay, yes.
Yeah, you're talking about that step area, right, whenever I touch it, it's the same.
Oh, that's it.
But yeah, just.
By the sinks, yeah, I thought that was, but yeah, okay, if that makes sense, thank you.
Yeah. It's mechanical.
Thank you.
Yep. Any, any further comments on the front of the building? I know that WPA spent a lot of time working that and trying to get that down, I think we are to a point where we're comfortable with that, we're pretty pleased with the fact that there is one main entrance. And it's denoted very significantly in that sense, that door faces the, the approach, whereas the other one leads toward the classroom and hallway on the more westernly side, so they've done a fine job.
Just a comment on that wall here, the wall you're talking about where the lunchroom slash auditorium is, could you put some windows in that? I mean, it'd be, there's a, it'd be some large wall of nothing, I mean, it'd be nice to get light in there.
There has been a lot of discussion, we actually eliminated some windows as we were volume engineering it down because they turned out to be very expensive because of the structural integrity of that entire existing box. So, uh, is it possible? Yes, uh, it's just, uh, it's, it's expensive.
So we, we got the estimate from Bud Mahal's, pure north of fourteen million, our budget for this project is twelve million. We worked with obviously Blue Line and Bud Mahal's to get it down to about twelve and a half million. So that was one of the conversations that we had, was cutting out some of these window structures because of the cost associated. One with cutting them into the wall and then securing, not securing, but structurally, yeah, shoring them.
Structurally.
So the other question would be skylights, that'd be another way to get natural lighting.
You could do that as well as, as we understand it, and maybe I'm speaking out of line here, but there's a relatively new roof system on there that we're hoping to maintain. Once we interrupt that, uh, it's basically a whole new system again, and that would be another very pricey item.
You will recall also in prior renovations that we had some, some windows cutting along the east side and the west side. They too were a little night because of cost. So to bring more light into the gymnasium area, we'll put some lighter paint on the, on the ceiling. That's a good lights in the lower lounge.
Can you, can you offset some of that, just with the interior lighting?
LED lighting, yes.
It's very well lit, yeah.
Once you get it.
Yep.
Could you paint a mural or something more exciting than a blank wall on the?
That's where you're planting trees, alright.
We do, we do landscaping.
That is.
We, we do have right now five more vertical columnar trees in that space. There's a seat, there's actually, there's a, if we go back.
Yeah. There's a little plaza right out in front of that, I'll zoom in.
Interesting.
No.
Will they be full blown trees? I mean, some of those trees are gonna take ten to fifteen years to get tall.
They, they've, uh, I mean, if that's an area, we, I mean, you know, a normal installation of a tree costs, you know, three hundred fifty per tree, I mean, maybe that's not too big of a cost if you could buy bigger trees for areas that are more.
Spec is usually what, two, two inches.
Two and a half.
Two and a half inch caliper trees.
Could you put our big, big city logo with famous city USA on it?
You could just park your car so.
I can do that, I need. So yeah, it might be a little hard to see, but there are, there, there's a floor door that we need to, and this kind of act as a you know, in between basketball games, you know.
A place to hang out.
A place to hang out, so there's singing walls on either side, so there's a little bit of a vertical element for people to use and then yeah, we have the the planting bed with large columnar trees.
So things you're not seeing in this plan is, uh, we have a flagpole, we have trees. There's actually that row of trees against that wall, then there's that gathering space with benches. Then there's another planter area with additional trees on that.
And let's.
So.
And it's to the right where the lettering, like what's the little splat right there on that tree, is that like gonna say?
Yeah, uh, that would be.
Hill, Hillcrest or?
Yeah.
Well, there is forum city.
I mean, that, that final lettering would be up to the city.
We've, we were trying to make some of the lettering consistent with what we have at the fitness center, so see the signage on the fitness, forum family fitness center, we'd use similar font and typeface. Or font size to different chair.
And, and this park, everyone doesn't go through this building, you can go into all the facility or wherever, but this is just if you might go, use whatever's in that building, right?
Yeah, when you're, when you're junior jazz, let's just use that as an example, is the science of to play in this building, that's the building will be labeled and very easily identifiable. That was one of the things that we wanted to make sure with having that entrance face outward, very clear, because there are a number of other areas to enter the building. But having a main entrance was important to us, so it's labeled and very clear so that there's a large drop off area out front, a lot of parents bringing kids up, drop them off. A lot of grab the other kids, run around town. And, and so we, we felt like this was a, this was a decent solution, a lot of the coloration as well as trying to tie into your other rec centers.
Well, people assume it's a gym, I moved to, but basketball labeled that, I don't know, same. Is it obvious?
You mean it?
Like, could you label?
So you're only building on site, so you are, you are scheduling for example, a game and a basketball game, a natural flow would be.
Yeah.
And then we, we, there is, uh, may not be very clear, but we do have space. There is, there will be a sign for the park, that's weird. Um, out here by the road, we'll have a sign out here, um, just, you know, we, I guess we could put whatever on.
Gym this way or something?
Yeah. And then there is a, another secondary sign at the north end, wants to come through on university, but that one, yeah, there's a small, an even smaller sign. Right up in that very top area, we, we have been there, it's just a, a little back, but you've arrived.
Other questions, comments?
So, so that little corner where there's a house on right now, but have, have you done any kind of what ifs? Like what if they sell it off, they sold out to the city? Is there anything that, so we, we, when we approached them, it's a commercial business and they're not interested in selling. So we haven't incorporated any into that plan.
We have, we haven't explored it.
We've not studied it because it wasn't part of the project period, but yeah, that's something, but if they did decide to sell it, yeah.
So just to bring you up to speed on some of the other happenings on that particular site. Uh, in the last couple of weeks, if you've been down down that area and noticed a lot of activity. First crew's been down there removing asphalt, rebuilding concrete. There was sod. Pavilion is now gone, tennis courts removed, restrooms, actually the restroom building is not down today. And they've got Tucker Landscape down there removing any of the trees on site. Our, our park, meaning of the first park, needs to be completed by seventh of October. So the contractor can move in, hopefully start doing the demolition very soon. So demolition bids are due actually on Thursday of this week. Probably take about thirty days to bring in contractor onboard for the demolition. And then they'll start getting after the demolition of the building, so. So things are, are happening.
So what happens in the winter when it gets cold? Will they just do, will you just do most of the building? Will you still be able to pour other things?
Well, it depends on the winter, obviously. Much of the demolition can be done, matter of fact, I think, with regard to the weather. As the, as the building is demoed, there are some tunnels underneath the existing building that will need to be, uh, the concrete needs to be removed and then backfilled in there, so that'll take a little bit of time. That will likely take us through a good portion of the winter months. And then there's some site grading we can have also during the winter months. We'll stay away from putting down concrete. And that's cost because when we put concrete down in the winter, you've got to blanket the ground before you pour it and you have to blanket the concrete afterwards, that's, that's cost to do those, those processes.
And, and kind of to answer your question, we did end up splitting the project into two separate bid packages to be able to get the work that can't be done over the winter bid out prior to winter. So all of the on the ground stuff that will happen in the spring. Basically, because we split it up, things can happen sooner.
And if everything goes well and you have no supply issues or whatever, what's your timetable of completion?
Lost your fingers?
Just out curious to you, as far as the Hillcrest Building, the south of school. Is there a net savings, saving the building or does it cost more to keep it the way it is? I'm just curious if you just, I'm not just curious, it's obviously where we're at, but was there a net savings or a net cost to preserve the building?
I'm not the architect, but I can just refer to what we end up having to do with restrooms, we do a lot of municipal parks with restrooms. You're saving a lot of money by using that gym. A restroom alone is three hundred thousand dollars. And so you can only imagine what it would cost to re, to, to, to push the whole thing over and redo it. Uh, you'd be millions of dollars in order to, to, to reconstruct it and basically get the same thing we've got today.
So where we're at, twelve and a half million for the park, the way it sits, it could be another five million to replicate what you've done through.
Yeah, if you were, if you were to wipe that and go home to gymnasium, yeah.
That's what we looked at. Even just when we were first conception, it's like that cost would be to recreate that, that existing footprint. Even back then, we're estimating to qualify that, so. Multiply that by today's inflation, it kind of presses.
Today's inflation plus the delay.
Right.
Steel is absolutely insane, we've got one project, it's got switchgear on it. They, they told us a month ago, they're now three years behind. So.
It went from one year to three?
Three years, so now we're in construction and they just basically turn the lights off and we'll wait it out.
Is that, is that big circular area, is that just a, like soccer and grass?
Large open space, anything you want to do out there?
Said you relocated the splash pad, is it still the same size? Is it a?
Yeah, um, when we basically aligned it with the, the one before it was ju, it moved maybe fifteen feet and it was slightly askew, when we straightened it out, it, it's you wouldn't have noticed had I not said anything. So no, it's still the same size. Still the same concept.
Just straighter?
Just, so what, from the, so we had to add a fire lane with two permeable grass pavers thing. Basically the, the sidewalk that we're using for the fire lane is now ready to line with, it'll give a nice view to the splash pad, whereas before it is, is a little off to the left.
Good.
So when's complete, completion date? Give us a guess.
Fall, fall of next year, we're hoping.
Fall of twenty three?
Yes.
Park was festival there.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
Yesterday, the.
Yeah, yesterday, yeah. I agree with you.
So a number of, a number of months ago, Mayor and I were talking about wanting to have a discussion and overview of boards and commissions. We have a series obviously of existing boards and there was a question as to effectiveness of some of the boards and the staffing of those boards. And obviously if there are boards, for example, that are more active than others, are all of them necessary? Are there, is there a desire in the part of you as a council to work with? For example, Karen has created new commissions and committees, the sort of purpose is different than all of the boards and commissions that have identified below, so what you see here is a document that Karen has put together and it identifies each specific council or commission. Notes board membership, notes when their terms expire, notes the staff that is assigned to each of the respective committees. As well as talks about the effectiveness of each of these committee and commissions. And then provides if, uh, you know, a little input from staff as to how we might make these committees and commissions a little more effective, if there is a need or a, a comment associated with how we can make them more meaningful. So we are presenting that to you for your review tonight. So you have an opportunity to review the committees and commissions that are currently active. And I just want to give a few minutes to Karen because she's the one who's compiled this information, has had conversations with staff relative to each of these committees and commissions. And provide her an opportunity maybe to, to provide some input as to, um, prospectively where we are going.
Hope you don't mind if I just tuck that paper right to the table, so, um, yeah, I tried to be consistent with, with how I looked at each one. There, there was only one in this group, the Recreation Allocation Commission. They are alphabetized, but definitely helps get to this. The Recreation Allocation Commission was put together, or yeah, committee, sorry. They were put together for a specific purpose to help collect new long-term sports league partners for the city. And that, and the process has been changed, so it's no longer necessary. Bryce, our recreation director, said this is probably no longer needed, so that's and right now I don't think anybody's even on this committee. So this is a good one to just clear out, um, to clean house. Most of the rest are, are functioning fairly well, there, there were a couple in there that, um, need a little boost and the Historic Preservation Commission is just getting going again, so that one will fill out very shortly. And then there were several in there like planning commission, um, board of adjustments, those ones that are required by law. So, so definitely, um, part of our regular process.
Karen, I, I think Terry serves on like a Utah planning, that isn't on here, I serve on the youth, youth council.
That was like a board. Yeah, these are, these are Orem specific in our code.
Right. Right. Yeah, yeah, we dropped off, uh, so I dropped off ones where your liaisons, but for an outside group or the youth council is just a, a very different group and then the Metropolitan Water Board. Just functions very separately from the way all these other boards and commissions do.
Okay, thank you.
But, but what is nice is, is that our IT group has put together an amazing little program that helps us track all of these things, so we know who's on board and it tracks the application process and and it streamlined this for the staff who, I mean, this is a lot to juggle at times, all these different applications that come in. So I was really impressed, you know, especially coming from, um, Provo doesn't have a system like that for tracking it. And so this was really amazing to see what you have to, to keep track of it and to let everyone know who to talk to about, about the different boards and commissions, who on staff, who on council. And, and of course, I have enjoyed listening as you guys give updates on, on the different boards and commissions you serve with, because that's the point.
Karen, I'm on, the Utah League of City of Towns is one that you didn't mention.
Right, oh yeah, that, that's definitely another one that's, yeah, that's a, a separate board that your liaison too, yeah, and that's fantastic.
I'm on that. And so.
Yeah, yeah, wouldn't be on this one because you wouldn't eliminate that one, obviously because it's there, so.
But it, but it would, but it would be useful to have all the different council.
Oh, and I could add that to the discussion, yeah.
Yeah, all the different council members, which organizations they're on, because the jobs aren't usually very, yeah, you do.
Right, it does help in balancing the workload for the council members themselves, so I'm happy to add that as a.
It is just about how, which, which ones they're on and how long they've been on it.
Perfect.
That would be good.
I can, I can round that up, but this definitely gets you started. If there are more questions that you're looking to have answered, let me know, so I can reach out to the staff on these, but I felt like there was really good information to get you started on, on understanding at least what each group is providing. Oh, one of them, let's see, I think it was the Board of Fire, Building and Fire Code Appeals. One of the suggestions they had was, I believe it was lengthening, oh yeah, they would like to allow board members to serve more than two terms because it's such a specialized board, you need people with experience in the construction industry. And that makes a big difference for them, they don't meet very often and so they're not gonna get worn out. But sometimes it's hard if you put a limit on the number of terms on certain boards, so that's something to keep in mind if you just.
The two, just.
No, Board of, um, Building and Fire Code Appeals, yeah, it's, they meet very rarely. But it, it's, it's kind of a proactive move to have Orem have its own to resolve those issues. Is Mark Sanders in here? We can ask him. Five-year term.
Right, so it's, it's managed through our development services.
Yeah.
Okay, we're actually bringing it next month, October eleventh, we're actually bringing that as an agreement to the council.
Oh, okay, great.
It's not necessarily adding on terms, just allowing them to extend some three-year terms, three-year term, and continue the three-year terms.
Okay. But just not limited to two terms, which it's doing currently.
So, so can you just run through a, a quick, I'll say which ones are mandatory, did you acquire?
Oh yeah, so, so arts council not mandatory, um. But valuable. Very valuable, well, and I, I'm not sure that I would say any of these are not valuable. Just, uh, it depends on what you're looking for, beautification, not a mandatory.
Yeah, so something, so what I'd like to do is just.
Oh, just those. Oh just those.
Pick the ones that are mandatory, come back and we'll talk about the ones that are optional.
Okay. So right now is the ones that are mandatory Board of Adjustments Board of well Board of Building and Fire Code Appeals isn't mandatory but it's it.
Well that's in our
It's is that in the code?
It is in the it is mandatory it may not be in uh
Not in
City code but.
Oh okay it's at a state level that one was a new one for me so.
Yeah. They I mean like they said they meet so rarely maybe wanna base it on a number of meetings every hundred years.
Yeah. That would be a good one.
And I think Planning Commission is one of the other ones.
And Board of Appeals or Board sorry that's Board of Adjustments sorry to say that one.
Board of Adjustments.
Um the Care Advisory Commission you would need for the care grants. That's that's their main purpose um and then CDBG Advisory Commission to be part of that CDBG process.
There
Um.
There are some there are some of these boards that are required for example if we are to make application for a grant. So for example if we are working right now on relocating that log cabin that we pulled off State Street locating in Orange Park. We're trying to make application through the state of Utah the state history Historic Preservation Office.
Right.
That does require us to have a Historic Preservation Committee if we're gonna be considered for the Tree City USA designation we're required to have some sort of committee commission for trees. Beautification Commission serves as that conduit to achieve uh Tree Arbor Day Tree City USA designation. I'm trying to think of some of these others that are that serve a purpose obviously other than just requirements Summer Fest obviously that's a huge deal in the city not required but we couldn't make it happen without a very capable committee.
I guess my I guess my question is just which ones are mandatory and then that leaves the rest
Well.
and then have the rest you know we we can talk about this individually.
Mm-hmm.
But and 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 as far as what I mean maybe we wanna have all the boards. Uh my question for the group is do we wanna keep all these boards are these boards functioning effectively and are there any other boards that would be helpful to create?
Right and I I did actually ask that of the staff involved in the boards and asked if they think of anything and there are a few suggestions in there um but uh some of them are some suggestions from one board were probably in opposition to suggest or the recommendations of another. There's one suggesting maybe a bicycle or active transportation group and yet on the Transportation Advisory Committee they they prefer not to specialize at that level they like to keep it bigger. So yeah so sometime um but I'm happy to come back with more specific information on and move it by required my you know and having it for other reasons. If you want some sort of a presentation then we could request that but uh.
Yeah, but I mean but my main goal in bringing this up would just kind of go through the boards and say what makes sense maybe everything makes sense and then what doesn't?
Mm-hmm.
And then what what else maybe is what went into the community definitely?
Oh yeah it's good to regularly review anyway if you like they said that Recreation Allocation one could have been eliminated probably a few years ago and so it is good to review.
So was everything else when in your research putting this all together was it effective or working?
Yeah and I it's it's pretty impressive what each group is doing and actually the I think the one that probably impressed me the most was Transportation Advisory Commission because of the diversity of that group and not trying I I've seen some of the issues in 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 Provo previously where if you have a very active group that's going one direction um and sometimes you don't have someone to balance it out on the other side and have them work it out and they feel like this commission is really fantastic about having that diversity. And so not everybody wants the same thing but by working together they can understand it from the driver's point of view from the bicyclist's point of view from someone walking and you know different ages different different genders everything so that you get a more comprehensive view and and they're making recommendations that are often a compromise for probably everyone on the on the committee. So that I mean I like seeing that most of all but uh yeah I didn't see anything else that jumped out as feeling less than functional or anything that 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 you probably wanna look at too hard for trimming unless you're seeing something as advisors to any of these groups that that concerns you. But as far as building an an extra or adding an extra committee um yeah I would tread lightly on adding just cuz I mean everyone has quite a few duties already. It's a it's it's a lot to put I mean which one of you wants an extra committee? Unless it has a
Data data.
Oh okay Mr. Spencer yes.
Well maybe we got five so.
Yeah, well and that's that's the thing is is what would it do that has a huge purpose that's not already being addressed and I I haven't seen anything that's not being addressed by current committees.
Well it's like for the the um Transportation Advisory Commission we actually have two people on that commission that are cyclists so I don't know if that was intended or luck and draw but it's good to have they were kind of representing that community and saying you know have we thought about this or
Right.
so and maybe that's something that we could if there needs to be a little bit of overlapping that we can have somebody in a particular interested area to serve on the commission just to make sure that that group is also that their perspective is being uh talked about and represented and shared rather than having a whole new commission or.
Right, well and I think that's a good recommendation as you move forward with any appointments or reappointments to make sure does this board or commission have the balance you want to see? Is it pulling from those different communities the way you want to? This I I know like uh uh the Arts Council for example everyone has a different impression of what is art. So is it representing what you want to see? The various communities of art in this community you know is it representing that or are you or is it all photographers? Is it all just painters you know you wanna make sure you're getting those those different perspectives so I think that's what's gonna be what I would focus on is making sure that you're getting a good variety in each of these groups that they're not that it doesn't become group think you don't have all of the same person going in the same direction because without that push and pull that you get like with transportation having an avid cyclist talking to someone who will who really relies on their car they're gonna figure out solutions in a way that a room full of car drivers won't and a room full of cyclists won't. So that that's my big recommendation is watching okay what does each person offer? Make sure that's the question that's being asked if people are appointed or reappointed.
Does anyone on the council have any suggestions as far as any boards that they feel are not that effective?
Just the Heritage so I wondered do you wanna ever combine the heritage and the historic? She says frankly the historic one Preservation Commission I've not done anything on that but like you say the cabin is anything that we're gonna be dealing with it do you see a consolidation there or?
Well I think the heritage heritage commission that's really focused on our our veterans uh programs and and recognition so
Do you want to maybe Heritage does? Oh.
Memorial.
Memorial, right.
They are kind of two separate purposes.
And I guess we need to start with it right?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think the names are misleading.
You just don't you just don't have anybody.
I don't have any like when you talk it happens.
So we have called anybody on the our council.
Yes.
That's possible.
We have sort of.
I mean not yet.
Nothing for nine months so we got something new let's do it.
Yeah.
Yeah cuz they I mean even if you had called it like Heritage Events Committee then you would realize oh it's it's more event related than just than with the sperm. Is the reason we don't call it Veterans?
Yeah, Veterans Advisory.
It's just in our code and I don't under I don't know the the history of why it ended up being Heritage Advisory. It's just it's always been identified as that in the code.
Yeah.
Veterans Memorial Advisory.
It's always just been heavily linked with the American Legion program, that's one of the programs that really is the focus just.
And heavily on you and Christie cuz we sell them as a core part of form. That's it.
I mean alas.
American Legion has those participants have been getting more experienced more mature and so they have a tougher place in their members than that that means we've had a tougher time with this as part of Heritage Advisory.
Always we might wanna consider that I mean them something I mean for me I carry a library store for the reason it sounds totally similar. So.
You gotta convince.
There you go, there you go.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well and if you were to do that on it sounds like it would be something we need to change as a code so.
Okay, Jamie do you have any thoughts on this?
I would I would just
It's been a long time.
Yeah, this is uh this resource that Karen's talking about and Karen I'm minimum on my phone trying to remember is forums.org or.
Yes, some of the
B C dot org.
Oh yeah, B C yes.
B C. So B C dot forum dot org this is a resource that's available to follow so you can log on.
Yes. Yes.
You can use your login and password which is the same that you do to get into your email.
Oh no.
You can log on you can see who can current committee members are when their terms expire. You can also see who's made application to serve on this committee or this commission. So if you know for example in one of your committee or commissions you have somebody resigning or somebody who's termed out and you say well I wonder who would be available to appoint people when people make application they self-select where they wanna serve based on where they self-select they go into the database so you already have a pool of candidates that you can draw from. Now if you have a group or if if you don't have enough candidates or you don't like any of the candidates well then we can actually go out and we can see conditional candidates. But that's a resource that's available so if you're interested in you know do they have experience in piano versus poetry versus painting in the Arts Council for example they include their um their resumes and what their skill sets are what they're interested in on their applications. Occasionally if we get a direct response to someone asking us to serve on a committee where do we send them to?
To this
It's the same address.
B C dot forum dot org.
So if they go to B C dot forum dot org they can fill out an application to be on a board or commission staff are able to log into that site to see the the backside of it.
So what happens on the backend? Let's say you have Joe's Citizen that makes application to serve on a particular board or commission.
Yep.
Then they make application and email is sent to the staffer and I think to you as a committee member hey there's somebody who's applied.
I don't think I've ever got this.
Oh it may just go to staff.
Yeah. It may just be the staffer.
Yeah, I've never done it.
But we know and and then we say okay there's a new person that's available and then our staff I know has been working with you when they can see it's become available to say hey these are the candidates what do you think about these people and then you ultimately make that recommendation to the mayor and once it clears the mayor then it goes to Jody and Tess and is placed on an agenda for appointment.
I think there are ways that a person would find that as far as if some random person wants to.
Yes, yes so they there's a there's a section on our webpage where it talks about boards and commissions and if you're interested in serving online where you're
Yes.
Correct.
Or occasion you can social media or.
Yeah.
I forget about that.
Yeah.
So does someone follow up with someone saying we don't have any positions right now the next they'll will be so I mean or they just go in this vacuum then you know I I'm just wondering what the follow-up with people who apply.
There's a notification I think soon as they apply say not every there may not be a vacancy at all you'll be contacted if there's a so we ignore it proceed and then we say you may you know if there's not a vacancy probably not here from there.
Something I noticed and maybe maybe I'm just not finding it but so when I was looking for people they act there were people who would apply for the particular commission that I was looking for but then I didn't do I go what if the for the people who said I will serve anywhere? How are theirs are they put into every commission then?
Yeah, I think there's an application per per commission that you want to be on cuz it gets directed to different staff members based on that.
They don't check the boxes I believe in the application no?
No. No I did well.
Cuz there were some that would say I'm willing to serve anywhere or but I want this one too or this one but I would be like serve anywhere too.
Yeah.
How those?
I think it asks I think it asks for like two or three choices I think.
So the people who say anywhere where do I go are they is that?
I don't think anywhere is necessarily.
If that's not an option beyond that.
Option.
But I do know too that we have it we have the applications expire and I wish Christie is here she know she just told me that it expires every so many years because you know you build up this list of applications and then people have moved or people have have lost their interest or haven't been timing their schedule. So that's the that's the other nice thing is we can keep the applications fresh. Um but I know the recent effort we made to get the word out about the Historic Preservation Commission uh you know we got a lot of responses because you know we got it out there told people hey we're getting this going again and we directed right to that page to apply. And and if you if there is something you're looking for we can help with that on the communication side um cuz uh something you'll hear a lot from from the public will will be you know why aren't there more people like this on this committee or board? Well it's hard to it it's hard to appoint people who haven't said they wanted to yet and just like you can't vote for someone who isn't running you can't you know you're you can't really appoint someone who isn't willing so we need to get the word out on a regular basis to fill these.
Yeah, I see that.
So
I see that.
It'll show up and you have to kind of self-select if you wanna select on now I don't think it limits how many you wanna sign up for.
It does. It does have a new and it has a Metropolitan Water District Board.
Well that one is a very different process it's I think it's more governed by the state.
That does.
No that so that's a separate government jurisdiction it's a separate district but it's
Yeah.
But we're required to have.
You're the ones who appoint.
Okay. Okay, great.
I just didn't include them in here cuz it's a very different process.
Yes, this is great, yeah.
It's hard to compare the way.
So if you wanted if you wanted to volunteer for all of them you could click on every section.
Well and then it would get funneled into each person's file.
Correct.
Okay.
I do have a question for Dave Spencer our newest committee is the Public Safety correct that's our newest board? How active are they?
Uh we meet probably once a quarter. So.
We're due for another meeting now we've met twice um established in the screen and.
Are you looking at policies procedures I don't know what.
And to be hon- to be honest it I mean the first meeting just to get together the second meeting uh was decided to establish a chairperson and three three members that really run the committee and then Chief Adams and I are a a part of that um and we really we're just now waiting for that individual to reach out to schedule the meeting and having a agenda. So as far as being active or inactive it's it's brand new and so there's it's it's.
Brand new starting.
Are there any issues that we need to be aware of like I don't know use of force or?
Nothing right now.
Nothing at all, okay. Just interested.
Okay um one last question are there any boards that anyone would recommend creating or you've thought about? I've got one and it doesn't have to be a board but it's a conversation. Um I've had several people tell me that there used to be something where the state would call for people to come out to a service project. You don't like that. Anyway and they would they would all meet up and they would go to do service and that sort of thing just something to kind of bring people together in the service and there is a push um post covid when everyone get their house to people getting more engaged with each other.
Right.
And so to extend that back create some kind of a good community service working together camaraderie kind of thing.
I wonder if it was part of the previous version of the neighborhood program maybe there was a cleanup portion of that. Oh yeah, I'm guessing that's.
Blitz.
There was the yeah there was the blitz where they would go to a certain street Sharp will speak to that.
Oh yeah.
I think maybe that's what it was called.
Neighborhood Blitz?
Yeah, kind of picking a block that needs TLC and now it would come out.
Did it for seven years in five neighborhoods and we would organize on one day for the community map you know maybe assign to paint up a map and stuff and then we would do more uh specialty work with neighborhood crews.
Yeah. So is that a subset of the library?
No, it was in the community neighborhood services we chose uh neighborhoods that were in the low and moderate. No, it was in the community neighborhood services. We chose uh neighborhoods that were in the low and moderate income status so we could receive the G funding. We ultimately went through all five of the neighborhoods and then we started going back through them. And at at the time, we felt that the neighbors need more support in um public enforcement. So the program kind of shifted it out.
Okay.
Shara used to be the director of this Community Neighborhood Services Commission.
Oh, wait.
And there we we do have our public worst department, a volunteer coordinator, Laura Vasco is our volunteer coordinator. So then we have groups uh who want to serve. Um she's the one that coordinates those activities. We used to be responsible for it. Now Tyler has that responsibility, but is that.
Yeah, that's yeah, that's right. In fact, uh she was heavily realized on the uh the the recent.
Day of Caring.
Day of.
National Service Day.
No, not nine eleven.
Yeah, there were several groups that she helped that were that were what we.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
So Laura was kind of the primary in organizing one of these groups. And with where we're at now too, we utilize the Just Serve through the LDS churches as a platform because as a big audience. And so we push projects through there, which makes it much more organized and effective to get people out.
Can I bring up something that um Jeff Lamson, he wanted to do a cultural event.
Oh yeah.
And I I don't know if I need some committee, but I love the idea of bringing people together. Um do you remember exactly what your vision was for us?
So yeah, the thought was to to have a uh cultural celebration of different ethnicities, um Native American, Hispanic, African, an opportunity to bring everybody together. It showcases talents, food and all those kinds of things. We'd actually talked about doing something this fall, but it kind of got waylaid by other things. Um so yeah, I mean, that's something I would still like to do. The Harvest Fair did a pretty good top of that yesterday. You were there.
I was.
See, who was there? I think I saw Debbie. I don't know if others were there or if I was there.
So the library did a really good one. Sharon. The one that the Hispanic best bow, that was really nice. They had um different countries doing their traditional dances.
It was uh Dia de los Niños.
Dia de los Niños.
And we've done a couple of other um events, but I kind of we sat there and talked with uh Adams, other potential outlets to work on the project.
So I mean, there could even be, unless you already got the system in place, but it could be events, it could be service projects, it could be just community coming together activities. I don't know, we have a structure for that or we could want to create a bit or something like community engagement, that kind of.
Be nice to have different populations represented from that, like you said, Native American, the.
Well, and you know, you got Swiss dates, you learn how to do the little dances up there. So you can do a lot, right?
You could think of that, buddy, doing that.
So anyways, something to think about. Karen, you can put it on your radar.
Will do.
As as far as just to summarize, um so if you could, if you could um rework this a bit, just as far as the political council members and what they're part of, so we can see it.
Oh, yeah.
And at a moment now, I live in on there. Um and then take off the recreation allocation by other committee, right?
I don't like it.
Potentially.
Doesn't doesn't actually need to happen to eliminate that committee then?
So let let's take a look at to see if that is in any way necess still necessary. And if it isn't,
Right.
then we would come back and we would amend the code and we would write it out.
Okay. Right.
Is that work?
Yeah. I'll I'll do the same thing with this uh Heritage Worship Commission, Historic Preservation Committee. Trying to name them, uh at least one of them, um something more tied to what it is. And then change that at the same time.
So that would probably then be more of the Heritage Commission rather than the Historic Preservation.
Yeah. Memorial. Okay, you get creative. Board's method.
Just so it's easy, but just like you're throwing there, try to figure out what you want to volunteer for.
No, that is helpful to to be clear on what these different boards and missions are.
So.
Hey, I can I can get that together and bring it back.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for working on that. All right. Okay, let's go ahead and I'll go ahead and grab our dinner and then we can come back and go through the general review of council report. Somebody like to give blessing on food? I'll stop by later.
A father, God, our heads before the evening gratitude. Thank thee for the opportunity of being together at these meetings. We're thankful for the wonderful state staff and the great work that they do to make this city such a safe and wonderful environment to live. Grateful Father to be able to take in this food, grateful to those hands that prepared and provided and pray that thou wouldst bless this food and it will help us to be healthy and strong. And we might use that strength to be good and to serve thee and to serve our fellow man. Say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
So we come up here. By.
See, we gone for a week and can't jump in two days.
Should we ever have a week?
It can be easy for fraud.
And so and I know that was a good thing, but we.
Somebody is real.
Because.
There are plenty of people coming off and keep up their party. There's just gap price.
Oh my god, they were risking more than my goodness, what uh electric bikes.
Oh, I I love my bike. If I was still working in pro, I would.
Ah, I'm not.
I'm not there yet.
So like it's a tiny bit, it's like that's basically.
That's.
Love it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't know.
No.
And I know. And he said.
Is Sarah in for, did I, when I, is Sarah in for now?
You don't.
Is Sarah in for now?
She's okay.
What's the first area?
You're personally.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Oh, wow.
Now, unless you want to work out like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They only have two shows.
Okay, okay.
That was looking shirt.
Yeah, I am on. Yeah, it's.
Um not yet.
Like white jeans.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's true.
So she should.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I say.
Where's our first, second floor?
Alvin, is that the same?
That serves, yeah. Or there's where are they living at? Very huge.
Our kids go to St. Edmund's. Done all the application or the rest will be on that. They're doing well.
You put the signal areas that you're interested in.
Yeah, he's they're kind of hoping you get out first.
My daughter loves to do.
Sam Park.
So in fact, she said we should talk or you know, she said we should.
I don't know. I reached out this. I don't want to, but you go to school every day. It's using that one center was so hot. My son is happening to six. He's coming.
Yeah, I do like. I remember. Yeah.
I wanna give her one there.
Yeah.
Sex.
Yeah.
So they usually.
My daughter's a lover too, it's.
I guess it's not.
Sort of.
Yeah, yeah.
I heard his name.
Is it super up?
No, she's. Yeah. She's like. As far as they know.
My grandson is almost at the same age. He's also mom mom.
Because my dad.
Yesterday he said goodbye. Bye, rabbit. It was just all uh.
It's like a joke. My niece has a kid. He's like, hi.
So we do next. They're just cute. I did learn from my grandson just like yesterday. He said, here's a. Scream bloody. Yeah, I knew it. They told me yesterday, he said. I'm like, let's go to the center. I'm like, okay. He was in and I said. That's. Oh, he screamed like I've never. Like you weren't there with your migrans and as they scream, they were talking. Like he had seen a ghost or.
I know. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I did not like elephants, like not a bad one. This woman, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I respond as.
Yeah.
I think it's beach.
Yeah. Yeah, let's go. Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
We are uh almost there till about seven, seven. With Pete and Pete and the mascot the whole time.
Forty five minutes maybe.
Okay. I was telling my my cousin just scream bloody.
Think it's gonna be.
It's lucky.
Any chance of Miro landing in Hoover's Lake?
I didn't talk about that. Have new ones die that down in like.
We had like a local mascot. Competition throwing balls or.
Yeah.
With other states.
Jamie, anybody have a thing about one?
Plus that's true.
Hey, Dave.
High school.
No, I'm grand talented on all my assignments. Right about it.
So. I will see you. You're sure he's not American?
Not do either way.
And you have to admit, when you go to the game, that fourth quarter, what you do, the runs and fire, I mean, it's pretty impressive. We were sitting by.
And Jamison has taken some of the classes from a couple of former Cosmos.
Sorry.
These are unbelievable, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Better fill those things.
I might just take over.
Jody. Bad game. His brother was. Is that right?
Someone had to dance, the rats too there, sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you see that the.
Rams or mascots that.
No. Doing a trick. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Man, take a bite deal. Good takes. Good takes, so.
Yeah. Like I would rather die.
That may have the next day, the coach gave an update, an injury update. And he quoted the mascot. And bought some.
I'm going to Nebraska games Saturday. The ball's terrible, but.
So.
Houston Nation does have a lot of fun.
Thanks. That's a fun stadium, isn't it?
Things, yeah. So I'm I'm interested to see how they can.
Well, are they? Was there.
They're.
Sure.
Not really, not really. They fired their coach. Are you uh.
Well, I do have some ability you more asked to do.
I get, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was fun.
That was awesome.
My dad's who has these tickets.
Oh, okay.
I'd rather take some and then I have friends who have tickets, so.
Okay.
We'll be there. Sorry.
Say hey, I'm gonna be here.
You'll be on.
You know what? I learned from my. Oh, they they have.
You're not giving.
For the state.
No, what question?
Game day.
Every time they get.
Third largest city in Nebraska.
Not five eight fifty five, but it's not good anymore. It was thirty to forty at the end of the day. And they.
Good man.
So yeah, I seriously, I just.
We're all hungry.
But when you going for the.
Friday.
So we getting to. You driving?
Both. Flying to Denver, get it my sister and then she wants to drive to Lincoln. It's her birthday and she doesn't like it being alone. Her husband killed himself seven years ago. So we go somewhere on her birthday, so.
How far is it from Denver?
About seven hours.
You gotta cross.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta. It's a beautiful drive.
Right, right along.
And and having just made that drive, I respect.
Yeah.
I I've been visiting Nebraska lots of times.
I will tell you this, it follows the Flat River and it's a good part of Nebraska, but that highway, freeway.
Okay, so Debbie, I have to tell you first, so we thought it was to Nebraska, right? So we came home and then we went back a few weeks later.
Okay.
We're we're in Omaha making our rental bar or not. Yeah, the person said, so what, we're you to Nebraska? Or like, oh, we're just from Omaha. We're just, oh, we're just on vacation. Just that she said, we came to Omaha where they.
Yeah, I would say this. It's a great place to live, but you may not wanna come on a business. It isn't for everyone. Great people, great schools, very religious. My first year BLU was repeated in high school this year. Oh, it's been blizzard lately. One time we took it out our front door. We little had a dig tunnels.
Oh, my goodness.
So for two, it was great, but.
I I lived there for twenty like months.
Where'd you live, Lincoln or?
That's not.
Omaha.
But I got this guy, he was about, he decided to start a snow shopping business.
Oh.
Bad idea.
Well, you worked, you earned your money.
I do very much earn my money.
Yeah.
You're gonna lose on volume.
But you know what, it um I have lots of fond memories and um really, really good schools, so I'm grateful for. Omaha has a few scary spots though.
Yeah.
It's a nice city, but there's some parts of Omaha, my my first husband grew up in Opillion. I don't know if you know the town of Opillion. But this um. It's a suburb of Omaha.
Were you any shoveling out? You shovel the ability to fill it in or not? Do you shovel the fill it or not?
No, we didn't.
No, this was fifty five years ago.
Okay. It's your first. Maybe you're at the start.
That was my first entrepreneurial idea. That was a really bad idea.
Yeah.
Because you go, you negotiate the price before. Because you go, you negotiate the price before the season started and I didn't realize it was like a point now.
Yeah.
It wasn't a bad idea. Needed more help. For snowboards. You know you're cold in Nebraska and your bones are cold, like your bones are.
Goes right through you.
Goes right through you. Twenty below. And below house. Yeah, I've never been cold in Utah like I was cold as a child. And my dad was, I won't say he's cheap, but he was. We had a lot of kids and. He was a professor, we had seven kids. He would just tell us. Just put on an extra layer. That we could sleep with the depth, see my breath, that is not. So we would sneak out. So we watched the game, see them. Have they done a lot? Doesn't surprise me. I think I knew that. Yeah, he just.
No kidding.
Omaha has beautiful things. Um, it's a lot that has literally. Huge. Oxen, wagon, tiny, I mean, it is, I think it was only more than a car and it's not a. But it takes them a whole lot. It's all a notion of the. The wagon train.
And the vice versa throughout downtown.
Yeah, the vice versa. Yeah, and then you can go to uh, of course, Winter Horses.
For from George, they have the. College school cheerleaders.
They do. At college, we're certainly, yep. And a place called Exarment, which is Nebraska spelled backwards. And they have like racing, horse racing, and I don't know whatever. Plumb, way more. I'll reach out to you next time.
Cause that's.
That's right. Yep, yep. Yeah, I don't.
There was a couple of years ago, Nebraska was ranked like worst state for tourism. And they they had leaned into it just the adopt, like they're smoking for tourism.
I don't know.
And paying to Nebraska, it's not for everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we say.
Yes, yeah.
It's a great place to live, but you may not, but you may not wanna visit, yeah. However, we do feed the world, so there is beauty and.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
In fields and cattle and more and Albota and Sorghum and.
And the fireflies.
They're amazing, amazing.
Oh, I do miss fireflies, because we used to make jewelry and we used to offer a little glow things and make them jewelry. I miss the fireflies.
That's guys torture.
Better than someone else.
Yeah. Guy, you just. So I grew up in Indiana, I remember all those.
So how good's your Indiana ticket events like Cornhuskers this week?
Yes, you know, I don't know, I don't follow Indiana, the future's performing very much. I'm not sure.
Maybe it's.
I don't think they're very good.
You're saying you may have a chance?
Yeah, I think you probably will.
You can't, all I know is.
Yeah, we're out of time. Sadist Scott Prochus, the quarterback. It's a while. I'm supposed to be the. Yeah, quarterback.
That's.
Trump.
No. I can't even sell it. I don't.
I don't know how much they get.
Better off to have a Richard's.
One and two.
Or one and three.
Need to.
Yeah.
Josh, when you go to Poland again?
I don't have, I don't have a trip.
Oh, no, I'm triple.
I read the book where you talk so. It was. Hunting and.
I can't remember what's coming up.
Is it hunting and snowboarding?
Yeah.
We're in snowboarding already.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the stuff that's coming up.
Oh, okay, I didn't say wow.
On anyway.
Do you alpine beer nights?
What are you hunting for? There was an owl for deer, so. Where? Hey, uh.
Did you just see this?
I think.
You saw it.
Uh.
Well, since that she is tricky, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It got spotted in White River, it's everywhere you're going. And whatever it was, for hundreds. But yeah, I put my daughters.
I don't know why she.
Hey, so I have a.
I would say.
Is that when she's sixteen?
I'm sorry, but I was about, I'm sorry, here.
Yeah, this would be very.
So I was watching. That's what I expected.
Doesn't use like the hiking ladder. Just steam it enough.
It was real.
I just wish they would take care of it afterward on. They basically, they shoot and then just sit on it. Stuff somewhere and play on it.
Actually.
Tell what they.
My brother is the one.
All right, let's reconvene, our meeting. We're going to uh. Just quickly go through the agenda, I'm sure we've got everything set. Uh, I'll just run through this, so six P M call to order, invocation, pledge. Here's, I prefer by the council. And that will go to an annual report on the Landbury Advisory Commission. And we got personal appearances item number seven. But we're gonna change that. Got an issue. Uh, as far as what what we can broadcast and what we can't. And so it's been determined that we shouldn't broadcast. The item eight point six. And so because. A lot of comments will probably be about that same topic. We'll just move the comments in front of eight point six. And then we just won't broadcast that entire part, those comments for eight point six.
So, Mayor, just a clarification, by broadcast, I mean, we're not gonna livestream it, but we are gonna still have a video recording of it, which. People can obtain after the meeting by email.
Right, so we'll record the entire meeting just like normal.
Yep.
It's just we got pushed back.
Yep.
On the broadcasting, so we're gonna practice the comments and the resolutions in the same place.
Okay. So.
No, I I'm not streaming this news at all.
Oh, you're not?
That's why I was.
So I think I think you're good to stream, I think the idea is we'll stream, livestream until we get to. Right before eight point six with the uh personal appearances. We'll stop livestreaming right before the personal appearances.
Oh.
And so we won't livestream personal appearances and we won't livestream. Six.
So you're gonna do everything on this, do we need this part?
No, I haven't, I did this for sure.
So also our livestreaming. And then, yep.
Okay, so we'll do everything exactly the same, we'll just turn off livestream. Go to eight point one. So appointment plans, commission. So reappointment. And we've got appointments, the summer festival, eight point two.
That'll be mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be great.
And then eight point three, we've got a public hearing. On an ordinance. Is that something we've talked about before?
I don't remember that.
I don't know, we did this.
So we're gonna just have a hearing on that. So we, so we'll have a hearing and we'll have a vote. Is that right?
What is the gist of that?
They're sending the sign zone for the church. Center point church.
Center point church. So what kind of sign are we allowed? We just have heard a lot lately about the boards alone in that area.
Yeah, not building one, just get a typical sign that you see a lot for any business on the freeway. That's the type of sign. It's a smaller building, it's thirteen. I have a picture one.
Yeah, might be something to be better to have one more information on, that was a big topic, so.
So just.
Didn't you send that to us, or? Pictures in our minutes? Okay, sorry. The planning commission did recommend.
Okay. We've got item eight point four, public hearing resolution. Ending portions of chapter four of the home general plan.
This is what we talked about. This is the follow up from last meeting where we identified the four strategies.
The four ways, okay.
And this is due, what, October first?
October first, yes.
This, yeah, this is the one you suggested we read, uh, Mayor, before we come back to it, isn't it?
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, this is that on the.
Yep, yep, some in red ink, some in black. I read and gave my thought comments, Jason. Um, didn't we have the minutes? Did everyone not get through those yet? We had a whole bunch of minutes. They're 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 not here for approval, so I guess we can't.
And the Jody's similarly don't say something that they need to be pushed back to.
Oh, cause she, okay, thank you. I reviewed them and talked to Jody.
So so what is the process on that? Is everyone review the minutes and sign up on it, or does?
We haven't.
We go to watch.
To have it in the past.
Oh, yeah, everyone's welcome to, so Jody sends the link out, we can check those documents, if there's anything glaring that was off, we can get it adjusted before it ever shows up on the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, but we just haven't had the. The feedback group hasn't come back yet, so we're good, the draft ones are posted where they have to be posted, but we haven't put any of the council media until council's comfortable.
Okay. And so how do you know when the council's comfortable?
They'll let us know, yeah, I mean, we were on last time they got polled, so that's how we knew they were.
So do we have a good communication loop on that you're putting out there and you're getting pulled?
That, yeah, that's all.
I just don't want there to be a lag.
Same, we got.
Yeah, we got three, three weeks were sent to us at the same time, last time on the holiday weekend, so I think that was probably part of the issue. Right, so. I do need to.
Do you wanna say, say, I'm okay, move forward, or do you want? We don't say anything that's a submit, we're okay?
Yeah, yeah. So. So the time. So when they got polled, so when we got, when they got polled last meeting is when we got the assumption that it was. When they actually communicate with Jody that she needs a Thursday, Jody publishes. When when changes are made, she has, she would have had time to agenda published by typical end of before the weekend starts.
Okay.
So we're good, like, we're not violating anything, we're ready to get them done too, but we wanna make sure you're comfortable with this law.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we get a good communication.
Yeah.
Back to you.
So when all of all of you are okay, signing off on the minutes is when the.
Yeah, cause Jody said and I wouldn't know, she could tell no one had opened them, so.
But they're all.
And I tried to open them and it was locked.
Yeah.
That's why I figured to have a time frame or something, or is it somebody?
Do they lock?
Like, yeah.
I think there's a time frame, but like I, you know, I I wouldn't look at the minutes, because I know whether people are looking at the minutes.
Okay. If you're looking, if they're logged, if you're not logged into your ORAM account. If you're logged into your personal account. I thought I was. Then you don't have access to. So that's right. That's probably one of the trouble spots, just troubleshoot.
She will grant your personal one, okay, cause I signed in my personally, couldn't get logged in, so I asked for it. Then I went back in and signed it as my form and et no problem, so.
That might be.
I thought I was in my org, maybe.
Okay, so I I I'm just trying to make sure we've got this communication set, we need like a city council that's like responsible to say. We're done with these and they're coming back.
So some of you are, some of you are a little more focused on the minutes than others, we just wanna make sure that. All of you have the opportunity, so.
Okay.
So, you know, if you don't respond, I mean, we know that there are several on the council who want to review the minutes, and we know others based on experience. You haven't really been that. I guess engaged in the minutes. So we're just waiting for those who are focused in the minutes to say, we're good to go.
Okay, so you feel like you've got a good loop on that?
I think so. I'm I'm, I think if if we don't, if you have the minutes out there and you don't respond, then that's that's it.
The default is you accept.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
But I just didn't have a chance to reply or read them. And I didn't wanna prove minutes ahead.
Right, okay.
But I tried this time.
We have, we have forty five, from what I understand, we have forty five days per our council policy to to approve the final, so. I mean, there's time, just.
They'll all appear next.
On the eleven.
All right, so. What we'll just go forward with that, if there's any problems or. Yeah, we get one. Um, eight point five, revol- resolution, expressing intent to combine form dispatch services with pro dispatch services. That will be a vote.
I just have a question, or I know there was some concern that dispatchers had had know the mayor some questions.
Right.
How we resolve all of those issues so that they're all.
Absolutely.
We have, okay.
So I I remember the chief and and Dave Spencer, and we kind of went through all those questions and all those concerns and and to my. My concerns were were answered, so. If any of you have.
I think Karen was responding back to me, was right, is that right?
Yeah, I I went ahead and and responded back to those who have contacted you, and I should send you a copy, but um. Part of it is is. A lot of accusations about not being involved in the process, and it sounds like some of the people who had emailed in just. Weren't up to date on all the negotiations going on, so uh, I don't think there's any concern. Um, it, I mean, obviously, not every person's gonna know what step we're on in the process.
All right, I think.
But the the pay's been worked out and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Yes, Chief Adams answered all the questions, and I think we're good to go.
Yeah, yeah, we felt like it, and as far as the pay and compensation, the city made some concessions.
Okay. Okay.
Very, very good dispatch.
Okay, that's good. I know there's just concerns, I just wanna make sure they were resolved.
Absolutely.
Are we still on to go on that, whatever that October?
Yes.
Installation was.
And then we've got item eight point six, um, that's resolution of the city council. Of the city willing outlining its opposition to the twenty, two thousand twenty two general obligation bond. For the five hundred ninety five million proposed by our municipal district. My plan on that is just to let each counselor, just kind of like what we did on. I know we've got anything up for you like this, but let each counselor say what they think about this. Um, let's kind of go down the line and then we'll. We'll vote whether or not we want to accept the resolution. So, and and.
So we. Looks like we cleared your legal concerns that some citizen wrote to. I see you saw those, great, yes.
Yes.
I hate Steve. Oh, man, I'm going back to two generations, I'm sorry, Steve.
Greg Stevens.
I wish you'd call me Heather.
Yeah. I had that one figured out, I'm so sorry.
She's pretty though, that might be nice.
He just dropped out of his Christmas.
Sorry about that.
And we have, we had a very, well, we we had a uh. A person basically, uh, send an email with the concern.
Right, right.
And.
I had no idea.
I think we could still broadcast and be just fine, but in in the interest of not starting a war.
Yeah.
Which is this way.
As long as our legal is good, I'm good. You reviewed everything.
And then item nine point one, monthly financial summary, thus. That's not anything.
It's just informational information.
So does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Nope.
Anyone, um, are there any city councillors that are gonna report anything? I don't see a name on here.
No, I don't think.
I did mine.
Okay.
Usually once a month, it'll there'll be a name when it is that time, once a month, but it's also just, um, if there's anything else they wanna break out. But don't, it doesn't happen.
Okay. And then I did, I did get the email from Jason saying that he was gonna talk about something.
Three items coming, I want to. Email the stat line for those items.
Okay, so that that's not something you wanna go through right now, that's just.
The candidate you like, yeah, if you have a question, then you know you're welcome.
Okay. All right.
Just gonna make sure that you're aware of what's coming.
Right, okay, perfect. I think we're out of time. So. Anything else, we're gonna go. Anything else? We're good to go?
We'd like to welcome y'all here tonight and call this meeting to order. We're going to start. I was assigned the invocation and the pledge today, so. I called somebody I knew. And uh, so my father, Alan Young, will be doing the invocation. And my sister, Christie Moulton, will be doing the pledge. If you'd like to come up and, and and for the record, my dad's ninety three, so he's still going strong.
It's an honor to be here, grateful. Our dear Father in heaven, we are so very, so very grateful to thee for the opportunity to be living in a free land. One that many people lost their lives to be able to serve the country and and enjoy, help people to enjoy the freedom today. Father, there's so many, there's so many problems today in the school system. It wasn't that way when our children were in school. They didn't have to fight the evil things that are being said and done and taught in the school system. Here is an opportunity, we pray, to be able to change at least one portion of the state's school system. To be able to. Redress some of the evil influences that are going on in some of the schools. I've heard so much about the many evil things, not necessarily from family. But from teachers and others. We pray, Father, that our citizens will really put some thought and prayer. Into studying the issues, so that the freedom and the blessing of good school system, good teaching, good education. Let's don't be greedy. Let's don't do things that are going to harm our kids. Our kids are the most important product that we're serving. They're the ones that in just a few years will be carrying the messages that they get from the teachers in the school system. If it's negative, the country will have negative leaders. If it's positive, they'll have positive leaders. Please be. Please be with our people. If they made the right decisions at the right time, on November eighth, there is so much good can come from Orem having its. Very own school and board, and we appreciate that so much. Even this now, bless us, bless the people of Utah, bless the people of Orem, and bless these United States. Where we've got so many things that need to be changed throughout the entire country. And thus we pray, in the name of our Father and Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. Christie, would you lead us in the pledge? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go to item number six point one. This is an annual report from the Library Advisory Commission. If you'd like to come up and present to us.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate this opportunity. Um, I'd like to introduce Amber Larson. She's the chair of the commission this year, and Jonathan Wayes is the vice chair. Um, I'm not sure if anyone else from the commission is here, but we've appreciated their service and we are appreciative of council member Millet for being our council representative. Thank you.
Pushed on, there we go. I'm so sorry about that.
Just just pull a little closer to you. There you go.
How we doing? Okay, make certain everyone can hear me. Uh, thank you so much. We're uh, proud to be able to present to you today the fiscal year two thousand twenty one, twenty two report to the Orem City Council. And I'll just kind of go through this briefly. If you have any questions following our presentation, we're more than happy to address those at that time. And as Linay mentioned, I am Amber Larson. I am the current chair for the Library Advisory Commission, and next to me is Jonathan Wayes, our vice chair. Um, Matthew Bowler, Matthew Brown, Karina Lewis, Mary Stovall Richards, and Chelsea Young are also on the commission as of this year. We're all pretty new, except for Mary, I believe she's been here for a while. All right, just to give you a few of our service statistics for for the fiscal year, because um, we want to show. Uh, Orem library's continuing commitment to the city of Orem in literacy and what we can bring to you. Here's just a few of those statistics of what we've done this past fiscal year, even, you know, post COVID. We had over three hundred thousand people visit our library. Over thirty one thousand computer sessions were utilized, so we do have quite a few patrons using our technology. Uh, seventy two thousand pages were printed. We are still a hotspot for people to stop to be able to utilize the um, ability to print off. Pages when they don't have that in their home, and about fifteen hundred patron sessions were utilized also um, by patrons using the technology in our marker space. Um, our study rooms, almost twenty four hundred sessions were utilized over the past fiscal year. Our study rooms are very popular, hot and jumping. And this is where we can really show you our circulation and how much the people of Orem really do utilize the library. Over one point one million total circulation items were checked out over fiscal year, and if you take a look. Sixty eight percent is still physical copies, even though we have moved into a digital age. We do have a huge um, presence with e-materials. Lot of patrons enjoy using our um, library online, but we still have a lot who utilize our physical. Um, stacks, which it's still a place for people to come, open a book, crack it open and read. It's, for me, it's always a positive thing to see people still wanting to. Not just read it on a tablet, but also be able to look at the physical copies. Our library databases were accessed four hundred and forty two thousand times for online research and study. This is proving to continue to be a valuable research for our, uh, station for our community. Um, additionally, you can see that we had over fifty five thousand visits to our online digital library, just for yearbooks, Orem history books. Orem historical photos and the Orem art collection. Uh, the Orem Public Library still has been and will continue to be a good place to stop to. See our historical um, presence with the community and see where Orem has been and where we continue to go. It's a great repository for these things. And this is also something that I asked um, our librarians to include, because I want you guys to know how busy these ladies are and gentlemen. We had over a hundred thousand dollars worth of grants received by the library last fiscal year. Now, these are, I do have to um. Mention many are one-time-only grants. Some can be continuously applied for, but. Here's a quick breakdown of where these mon- uh, monies have been able to be allocated and to continue to support our funding for the library. Um, most notably fifty six thousand dollars to purchase e-materials through Overdrive. That's, that's a huge chunk of money and something that's very positive for our community. And I'll just leave that up for just a moment, and then we can go back to that if we need to later. We had over thirty thousand patrons attend our library programs last fis- fiscal year, and the library hall was used two hundred and twenty three times for library use. Two hundred and nine times for city use and twelve times for rental. So we do rent out the library hall. It is used almost on a daily basis, as you can see. By these numbers, actually more than a daily basis, if you um, add those together. We have some pictures of that wonderful Turtle Island Quartet that was very popular, our STEM program and our art program. Our summer reading overview this year. Our summer reading overview this year, we went for oceans of possibilities and had just almost twenty eight hundred participants register for this program. Adults and ages six to eleven kind of led the pack on those. But we did reach out and did have some of our teen and our very young ones participate as well. And over just a little, close to half of those participants did finish the entire program. We had one point six million minutes of reading reported and looks like about eight hundred and sixty four people showed up for our pool party finale. So that was possible, popular for those who finished. We continue to work with our teen and our tweens through programs. The library has set up a library council that has been going for quite some time, known as TLC. With ten to fifteen members helping to plan, prepare, set up, and host teen programs. And here's just a couple of the events highlighted from this past fiscal year. We have teen after hours, which include monthly movies, games, and activities that are held on Saturday evenings after the library is closed. We have teen anytime activities with puzzles, activities, crafts that can be done whenever is convenient for participants to come to the library. We also have take-home activities, challenges, experiments, crafts, and activities that these teens and tweens can actually take home and do with their families. Teen game nights and assisting with other programs by ushering in and other activities. I believe Charlene mentioned that sometimes we even pull these guys in to do a little bit of service for our library, which is very helpful. They are very service, service-oriented teens and tweens, and we're grateful to have them. The library offers a program for tweens that includes the tween scene for monthly activities, as well as reading challenges and other age-specific programs and events. And I think we're doing a pretty good job trying to reach out to these ages where literacy is so critical. And here are just a few photographs of some of those activities. So here's the teen after hours Halloween party and our tween art scene making. We have also been working hard to do literacy outreach to schools. The library provides a number of outreach programs to our local schools every year. Many of these programs focus on reading, literacy, and fun activities such as crafts and art. Here's some pictures from Windsor Elementary with our staff spending some time reading and making crafts. And some of our additional outreach includes taking professional musicians and authors who come to the library for grant-funded performances to local schools to interact directly with the students through performances, class appearances, and assemblies. And here's a picture of the Turtle Island Quartet as they performed. One of our classical concerts for library patrons, and then they followed later to a visit to Orem Junior High for their orchestra class, which is always fun to spice it up for those guys, huh? Okay. Thank you, by the way, for your continuing support of the library. We really do appreciate everything you do.
Does anyone have any comments, questions?
You've reported great on the past. Now I want you to predict the future.
Love to.
We talk about libraries and and they're, it doesn't sound like we're using any less from what your report says. Shar, you might be able to weigh in here, but. You know, we hear we're more and more digital. We get so much from our phone or laptops. Are we, are you anticipating in the future the same demand on the library? Is that a fair?
I think that's a fair sense, very fair assessment. I was previously several years ago worked for Orem Library and also UVU Library, right as the digital age was starting to creep in. And there was a real fear that digital was going to take over and libraries would become irrelevant. I, in the past ten, fifteen years since that happened, that's how long it's been, I've only seen at least a continued presence. Or more of an increase with libraries. So I think it's a fair assessment to say, yes, we will continue to see our patrons not only want digital because of the convenience, but the physical copies as well.
I'll just add to that. I think we've also seen the library did a good job in a social media post a few weeks ago about our library's media collection. As particularly our DVD collection and actually seeing great demand for that, the fact that. We might even have, or looking into getting more DVD players, people who have gotten rid of those at their own home, but still want to access the collection. It's become a thing that we might look into as well.
I can still check out eight-track tapes too, or?
I'm not sure about that.
How are we doing on that, Charlie? Maybe I can check on eBay for you.
Debbie.
I just want to say thank you. My grandsons, who are two and four, were part of your summer reading program, and that was a really good opportunity for them, and they were. Their mom was excited to participate in that program, and they did earn enough to get the pool party. So I just want to say thank you. And I also noticed that your Orem Reads is a romance-themed. I'm not sure what the book you were reading, but it looked really fun and had some fun authors coming. So thanks for some great programming.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Go ahead.
I just want to say it is a pleasure for me to serve with you guys on that Commission. It's just amazing to see the knowledge that's in that room. The Shar and all of our volunteers and the dedication they have to serving our population here and helping our, our kids. I love the teen and tween service opportunities because not only does that provide service, but it also builds confidence in them. As they serve. And I just love how the library lifts our community in that way and the dedication and diligence that is happening there for those kids. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thanks, Linnae.
I just have a couple of questions. I was curious seeing the library hall and how much it's used. And there was like twelve times rented and then four hundred times where it was just used. I'm just curious for the benefit of the citizens, what the criteria are to be able to use the library hall.
Absolutely. I'm gonna turn that over to Charlene to answer.
And we developed a rental schedule that is part of the budget, fees and charges every year, and there are different classifications. So depending on use is a different charge. We're currently working with the city attorney's office on refining some of our rental policies, just because we've been. Open for a year now and wanted to take a chance to refine a few things, but we have it outlined as to the price, and there's a different price for different activities.
So, so when it talks about twelve rentals but versus four hundred uses, is that not accurate? Is there, are a lot of those rentals?
No, we, we just did twelve rentals in the first year. There's a lot of city use that we. Probably had not anticipated as much, so we work around a lot of other activities and we. Like we don't rent it during the Summer Fest and we don't rent it during certain baseball tournaments because we don't want to overtax the parking and different things like that. So there are a few times that it is not available for rent, but we are heavily programmed with both library and city use, so sometimes it's about fitting it all in.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to understand if there's just different people or groups that want to use it within the city, that would be a rental basis, right?
We've had, we've had a wedding there. We've had a school use it for a showcase and then their graduation. It was a charter school. We've had some dance instructors have their recitals there, so it just kind of depends on what the use is and then. How they use the facility. We don't do weddings in the auditorium, but we do them in the lobby. We do, you know, we did the dance recital in the auditorium, of course, but it just kind of depends on what the activity is, how it fits into the fee schedule, and then. The scheduling of the availability of the building.
Okay, and then the other, the other four hundred uses, those were mainly like city meetings or help me understand?
We had a lot of library programs there. That's one of the main reasons why we built the building. So we had everything from storytimes there to all of the activities that were mentioned. We bring people in to provide programming to the community, just kind of a wide variety of things the library provided. And then the city has used it for a variety of things. They've used it for city meetings. They've used it for trainings. They've used it for employee opportunities. We've had open houses there. We've had. Different kind of types of planning meetings, all different things there. So it just kind of is used as needed by whatever group, whatever size. We were grateful to have the facility. We're grateful to have it as a resource in the community, and we've been pleased that the city has found good use for it as well.
Okay, good. One other question while you're up, Shar. I'm just curious where Orem's library fits in the scheme of all the libraries in Utah in terms of. Size and number of resources and all that.
We're one of the larger single-branch libraries. Provo is also a single, single branch, so Provo is a bit larger than we are, but many of the Salt Lake libraries are connected to. A county or a city network system, so they have more shared resources that maybe they're a smaller branch, but they have a larger access to resources kind of an approach. We definitely. Have an excellent library from the support of the city of Orem for many, many years, and we are grateful to be able to continue to build on that. We have a lot of use. We have a lot of people coming in, and we really appreciate. Having such a place in the communities, either, you know, meaning something to them or to be able to offer different opportunities for them. We will probably always be a single-branch library because of our central location, but we are looking at some other things. We had talked about expanding. As we can into maybe a locker situation for people to pick up at other convenient locations that are more north and south, and then perhaps east and west, just depending on. Budget and availability and all those different kind of things, but we are definitely trying to focus on making it quick and easy for people to access the library. We went to a holds-on-demand system. We used to ask you to come in and pull an item if it was available on the shelf, but. Over the past couple of years, we have implemented a program where we will actually pull a hold for you and put it in the front shelving unit so that you can just grab and go, and that's been very popular. So we have a really excellent staff that's always looking for ways to serve, and they've done a, they've done a good job.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions? Okay, I think, I think we're good. We appreciate what you do and, and the good things. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the. Next item on the agenda is the personal appearances. We've got a little bit of an unusual situation tonight. We're going to have a resolution towards the end. Of this meeting. It's item eight point six. It's a resolution where we'll discuss Orem's support for the upcoming bond proposal. And what we've been advised to do, this isn't our preference. We would prefer just to have an open meeting. But we've been advised by legal counsel that when we get to that part of the meeting, because it can be perceived to be advocating or against a ballot issue. That we'll have to not have that televised. It will be recorded and it will be available for people to request. To watch, but as far as the actual recording tonight won't be live. And with that in mind, a number of the concerns on the personal appearance kind of tie into that. And so what we're going to do is move the personal appearances right in front of item eight point six, which is toward the end of the schedule. And so we'll have the personal appearances before that. Those will be turned off, and then we'll have item eight point six, which will also be turned off. And like I said, that's not our choice. We would much prefer an open meeting. And this information will be available, but we're going to proceed that way.
Mayor, just per Steve's direction, that's probably something appropriate to do by way of motion. So to shift from item, to move item seven, personal appearances, to right before, for example, item eight, or item eight point six. Okay, if you do that by motion.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question too, before we do that? Is there any, would it be appropriate if someone else had a public comment that has nothing to do with? The school district situation? Would they be allowed to do that now, separate from that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather not break it up just because it.
I was just thinking if someone had something to say that didn't have anything to do with that and didn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, but that's fine.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question. Do we need to have the city attorney have us have a motion to just move the, where things fall on the agenda? Is that a, is that a motion that has to be made, or can't we just move things on agenda?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's probably something you ought to do by motion. I mean, it'd just be a motion to move item seven to right after item eight point five. Simple as that. Yeah. Well. Well, we talked about it, yeah. We talked about that being what the council would like to do, but I think that ideally we should do that by motion.
I'm, I'm happy to make that motion if you want, Mayor.
Okay.
If I get the wording right, wrong, let me know, please. I move that we move personal appearances from item seven to right before eight point six on our agenda.
Second.
Okay.
Hi.
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 Motion passes. All right, moving on. Our first scheduled item. Is item eight point one, and this is an appointment to the Planning Commission. And would you like to say something about that, Terry?
So Hayson has been serving on the Planning Commission for three years. He's up for reappointment. He's now currently serving as the Chair of the Planning Commission. Does a great job. This is a very big responsibility. They meet twice a month, plus all the research they do outside of their meetings where they're studying the issues and going and seeing properties in the city. So Hayson, the Planning Commission is a very independent group that does what they think is best, and I appreciate their honesty and sitting in the meetings and seeing how they function. So I would strongly recommend that Hayson Zakhar be reappointed as the member of the Planning Commission.
Was that your motion, sir?
Yes.
Second. Aye.
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 The appointment passes. Let's move on to item eight point two, and Debbie, would you like to take care of that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Shelley Seestran has, this is a reappointment. She has been in charge of the event Orem's Got Talent, which has been a wonderful opportunity for local talent, and she's done an excellent job. So we are pleased that she would be willing to do it for three more years. I don't think I see Shelley here. But I'm pleased to put forward her name as a reappointment to the Summer Fest Committee. So I guess I'll make that motion to reappoint to the Summer Fest Committee. Shelley Seestran.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Hi, the appointment passes. We'll move on to item eight point three. This is a, a public hearing ordinance, amending section fourteen point one point four sign zones and a sign zone map of the Orem City Code extending to the sign zone E. To include a portion of the Center Point Church property located at fifteen fifty South Sand Hill Road, and we're going to have Jason Bench give us a presentation on that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Can you guys see it on your screens? There we go. So this property is located fifteen fifty South Sand Hill Road. It is Center Point Church. You see here on the. So Center Point Church is located at this location. Stephen Sandiger, if you're familiar with the college, that was there a while, a long time. Dealership is located here, the old home base, if you go back years ago, that's this location here. So what they're proposing is to have a freeway sign. They want more visibility for their church activities that they're having. Currently, they're not located in a sign zone, and so they're, they default to a monument sign, six feet high, thirty six square feet, which they have on Sand Hill Road. But they want to be able to cater to more of the traveling public, let them know the event's coming. And so they're requesting that the sign zone be extended south to include their property. During the planning commission discussion, there was a discussion and a motion by the planning commission, recommendation, I guess, by the planning commission, to keep that sign zone five feet north of the front of their building. So this line here would represent approximately five feet in back of their building, so it's only this portion. That they would want to put that sign. So one recommendation, so we, we basically proposed that this whole area be extended down. One option the council could consider. If I draw a line, is to take that line. There and only do the portion that's next to I fifteen rather than the front portion that's facing. Sand Hill Road. So the original application was to put the sign, you can see the, the yellow dot was where they wanted to originally put the sign. With the discussion with the planning commission, with five feet back at the front is somewhere in this location. With the discussion with the planning commission, with five feet back at the front is somewhere in this location. So the, the sign itself would be hidden by the building itself from Sand Hill Road, but it would be visible from I fifteen. So here's a perspective of where they would want to place the sign. You can see that the Stephen Sandiger does have a sign as well, as well as the dealership and others. Along I fifteen typically have freeway signs that advertise their business only. This is not a billboard. It's simply a sign that meets the requirement for a sign zone within the city. A billboard is a separate issue. So that's not what they're asking for tonight.
And Jason, it wouldn't be lit or, oh, I think you're showing.
So it would be an electronic sign, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it would be a Maxwell, this one shows sixteen feet tall with forty-nine square feet is what they want. So if they were to shift that back behind the building, you would not be able to see this sign at least from Sand Hill Road, but it would be visible from I fifteen. So here's, you can see the, the building there. This would be the west face, so the green area is the landscape area that they would put that sign. You can see from Sand Hill Road that it would be hidden from Sand Hill. The planning commission did make a recommendation that the council consider to amend the sign zone with a condition that that be, sign zone only be within five feet of the front and go north, not, include any of their parking lot to prevent any sign coming, you know, down into that area. So be glad to address any questions.
Yeah, can you show again the, the perimeter of this, the zone change? Where, are you saying it's a five feet perpendicular to the freeway?
So what they're, they're saying five feet this way. So as it encroaches south, the, the zone itself would be, you know, the front of the building, five feet to the north. That's where, how far the sign zone would come down. So let me draw a line just to demonstrate what in meaning.
So, so Jason questioned, there was, there was someone at the planning commission that was concerned and wanted the sign to be moved to the north part of that lot.
Correct. So that would be in this area right here.
Or right above where the retention pond is to the north.
They wanted it right here, that the city does have some storm water lines that would not be able to be, put any footings or anything here, which is also open this way. But if you put it in the grassed attention area, it would be hidden by the building.
So is he, he's not, he's not happy with this then?
The, the.
The neighbor that was concerned about his, his view being blocked and.
Yeah, he was okay with it being next to the building. So between the building and I fifteen, he was okay. He just didn't want it south or, so it would be visible. And let's say they wanted to put it out here, then it would be visible to the neighborhood. So he was okay if it was up in this area here.
And it's an electronic sign?
It would be an electronic sign.
Does, I know we have problems with our billboards being too bright and there seems, and there's limited regulation on that. Do we have additional regulation?
They would just have to follow the electronic sign requirements, which does, I can't remember, I don't have it in front of me, but there are some limitations on the brightness that it can be.
And is that per city ordinance or is that?
Per city, so billboards are different, that they're operated by UDA or enforced by UDA.
We will have more control over this one, from an ordinance perspective.
And you can see other, there's other electronic signs that are not billboards on I fifteen, it'd be similar standards.
So Jason, is it a double-sided sign or just?
It would be double-sided. Although the north face, you probably wouldn't be able to see it too well, traveling south.
So it's, it's twelve feet, the pole's twelve foot and then it goes four and a half, what was it?
Yeah. So a total of sixteen feet high. And then the square footage of what they're proposing of ten foot nine inches by four and a half is forty-nine square feet.
So sixteen feet is the ordinance's maximum height?
It is not.
What is the maximum height for the ordinance we're putting in place?
So with the... So let me just draw a line to demonstrate. So from this point, approximately, that's a really bad sign or line, but within five feet of the building, it's about two hundred and twenty feet. So the sign zone is based on frontage. And so this sign zone E, based on a frontage, there's a maximum square footage, but this one with two hundred and twenty feet could get a, a maximum height of thirty feet with a total square footage of two hundred and sixty-six square feet. So it is designed to cater to freeway frontage.
So we don't have to worry about it being moved towards the neighborhood in the future? If the building's not there or if they want to put it somewhere else?
And then the one option, like I demonstrated with, is with this red line, is rezoning, taking sign zone E south, but only including from that line west I fifteen. So you're, you're basically just putting this portion in the sign zone and leaving this portion out of the sign zone. So that sign would not be able to be on, next to Sand Hill Road. It would have to be next to the freeway, if that makes sense.
Where exactly on this map would this, is the sign going to wind up? Is it where that arrow is?
Approximately somewhere in there.
Okay, because I mean, it seems to me like you'd want that, that's where you'd want it to be. You would want to kind of hug closer up there, because otherwise it's kind of in front of that other building.
Yeah, and the minister that was here at the planning commission, I think, was okay, satisfied with. They just want the sign to advertise their different activities that they're having. So I think it's, it would be appropriate, if they can find a location within that grassed area, I think they'd be fine with that.
So Jason, did it, they want, but they could have it thirty feet tall, you say?
They could, based on ordinance, yes.
You said thirty, right?
Thirty.
Is the max?
Is the max.
And so right now it's sixteen and a half feet?
That's what they're proposing, yes.
And how, and the building is seventeen?
Approximately maybe twenty or so. If you go to the elevation, you can see the northern portion is a little taller than the south portion, but it's about twenty, twenty feet.
So that, none of the lights would flare into any neighborhood?
It would not, no.
And I'm assuming it's not going to be as bright as a billboard, like lights up the whole evening sky?
Yeah, I don't think they're that type of neighbor. I think they would try to be good neighbors.
And then why do we want to carry that sign zone into Stephen Henninger's?
So Stephen Henninger already has, basically the sign zone needs to be a cohesive sign zone, meaning that we can't do a spot sign portion. So we're basically just trying to have it connect to the existing sign zone that's to the north. So we could do a strip of some sort, so it's along the I fifteen frontage to pick up what they need, but then not allow other signs in other areas. So if you were to take that line and maybe tweak it a little bit more to front, in front of Stephen Sandiger, I mean, that would probably be okay as well. Stephen Sandiger already has a pole sign, because years ago, I don't know if you can see, let me pull on my mark. The highlighter, so Stephen Sandiger partial is right here. Their actual parking lot, portion of their parking lot is in the sign zone E. So their sign sits about right here. So it was purposely brought down for Stephen Sandiger, so they could have a freeway sign. But that was prior to the church. That was farmland when Stephen Sandiger came in, if you recall. So the church has since been built.
So if we don't include that line, then what does it do to that property? They just can't have a sign?
So the sign could be anywhere within this area.
Even on Sand Hill Road?
No, so if we take this portion out.
No, but I mean, if we don't do the line, if we don't do that red line, we just do their.
So they would be in the sign zone then, E, which would allow the pole sign. Yeah.
In the parking lot next to Sand Hill Road?
Potentially. The, the whole purpose of sign zone E is to cater to I fifteen. So there are some, it has to face, it has, you know, front on whatever that, you know, definition is. But typically the sign has to be readable from I fifteen. That's the whole point of sign zone E.
I mean, could, like Laney mentioned, maybe could you do parallel to I fifteen?
So you, I guess you could come down something like... And Steve will have to correct.
Maybe you take the back of his building and just take a.
Come down something like that and then go south. You could do something like that.
I don't know if it benefits it, but.
But it would, it would basically, Stephen Sandiger already has that sign. So if somebody wanted to come and redo that, they would still have that ability. And then the church would also be able to pick that up in that triangle portion, which is really all they're wanting. And the, as a city of staff, we don't necessarily want it to go south, because we don't want others to have.
I mean, you'd encourage into the neighborhood and that's what we don't want to do.
Right, so we encourage the planning commission to the front of the building. They wanted it at least five feet back, which we're supportive of that as well, so.
Well, and almost the same thing with that building up to the north, right? To the, I would move your line over to the front of the building, maybe five feet back and do parallel to I fifteen. Can we still pull in the Center Point Church?
Like this?
Yes.
And then down?
Then it is definitely an I fifteen sign and we're not, we get away from the problems of, you know, going into the neighborhood.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that as a problem.
It's the church's need, where they're putting their signs.
And then it gives the council a little bit, well, the city, a little safeguard of, of potential signs in the future.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, quick question. So the dealership to the north, which is already in the sign zone, their sign is right out by the freeway. It seems like they have one on, not a, not a lit sign, but they have another kind of sign on Sand Hill Road, if I'm remembering right.
Yep.
Kind of, yeah, monument sign. So would the church or Stephen Sandiger be able to do a monument sign?
Yes.
On Sand Hill Road, but just not something that's bright and lit up?
Correct. Yep.
And have they expressed an interest in doing that at this point or?
I believe, well, I'd have to go out, like, I believe the church has a monument sign, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I mean, we need to open this up for public hearing, right?
Okay, so we're. I'd suggest we ask the applicants here and invite them to come up and speak to the application, if they're here.
Okay, is the applicant here? I don't think they're here. Okay, so we'll just open up the public comment for anyone that has any comments about this issue.
Thank you, Richard Ship. I used to live on Sand Hill Road when I first got married. So I am really in favor of protecting that neighborhood. I like the last one, the, the parallel along I fifteen. I think that's by far the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment. And then we just, we need to clarify exactly what we're voting for.
So I just wanted to point out that, you know, the applicant is, is proposing a certain height and size of a sign. But if the sign zone is actually amended to what's being proposed, they could build a higher sign and a bigger sign, as Jason has pointed out. And I think he, if I got the numbers right, I think he said they could go a max thirty feet and, and a sign, a size of two hundred and twenty-five feet. If that's not something you're comfortable with potentially happening, then one possibility would be to ask the applicant to enter into a development agreement, basically indicating that if this sign zone is approved, that they would agree that they would build a sign with the dimensions that they have shown here. That way you can have some, some security and knowing they're not, you're not going to get something very different from what they're proposing.
Right, I believe that's exactly what we would like to do, unless anybody opposes that. Yeah.
And obviously we'll have to, the applicant's not here, so we don't know if he's willing to agree to that. But, so maybe the, the proper thing here to do would be to continue this item and we'll try and contact the applicant and work out a development agreement with them.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. I, I move we continue this item, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that.
Hi.
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 Okay, the item's continued. Next, we've got Jason again. Item eight point four. Amending portions of chapter four housing of the Orem general plan. If you'd like to go through and explain that.
You bet, thanks, Mayor. So this is something we've worked with the council over the last several weeks. Planning commission did make a recommendation last week to recommend that the council amend the, or the proposal that we're doing tonight. So a couple of things we're also amending is the population demographics. We do have some numbers back from the census. Oh, no, although all the numbers aren't back, so we're representing some numbers that we have. So just updating some of the demographics based on the 2020 census. So these numbers are taken directly out of the census, so we're not adding anything different from what they have. So we're amending the population demographics, outlining comparisons to the different age groups that are within the city. Taking out the population chart, we'll come back once we get more complete information on updating some of this other information. Taking out a reference to the State Street mixed-use districts out of, out of the general plan as well. And then these are the four modern income housing strategies that we've worked with the council to come up with. The E, which is the top one, is our necessary apartment requirements, which we already allow in the city. So we're basically taking credit for that one. X is our senior housing overlay zone, which we also allow currently in the city. So we're also taking credit for that. And then Q is one that we're going to do a potential housing transit and reinvestment zone, working with a developer down by Wolverine Crossing area. That may or may not happen, but that's something that we can count as one of these, the criteria that we need for the state's requirements. And then V is the development of station area plans around the frontrunner station and around our BRT stations, which we have till 2025 to complete. So these are the four that we've chosen to move forward with. And then we've basically enacted four point four point two in the general plan that would be outlining these four criteria. Basically what this, what the, each one is and then what we will do specifically for that. And again, the planning commission did review it and did make a recommendation that the council amended as proposed. Be glad to address any questions.
So we did add, did you just want to highlight where that is in there? Where we added the owner-occupied housing?
Yes.
Middle housing?
Oh, yes.
Can we talk about that?
Yeah. But yes, all right, the intent of the council would be, it's under this one here, to encourage owner-occupied twin-home type developments in the station area plans.
Any other questions? I think we, we've worked through this a lot to get to this point, so I think we're.
And, yes, right there.
Okay, let's just open up a public hearing for this particular item. Are there any comments from the public?
Why they're coming up, Mayor, maybe just a little bit of background. The state is mandating the cities come up with at least four of these. So every city in the state is doing the same thing that we're doing tonight. We're just trying to fit these into our things that we're already doing and, and making it work with what we're doing, getting credit for what we're already improving, you know, doing towards moderate income housing. So we're not the only ones that are required to do this. It is a statewide requirement, so.
Right. Okay, we'll close the public comment part. And somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend portions of chapter four housing of the Orem's general plan, including updating section four point one, population demographic, graphics, section four point two existing conditions and enacting section four point four point two pertaining to moderate income housing strategies.
Second.
Bye.
Bye.
Hi.
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 The resolution passes. Thank you, Jason. Okay, next on our agenda, item eight point five. We've got a resolution expressing intent to combine Orem dispatch services with Provo dispatch services. If Captain Sworson and Lieutenant Presskeeper could come present.
So as we talked about in the work session, we, our, our dispatchers, we are very short on staffing. The state legislative and the state tax commission are looking to eventually move to two PSAPs per county. And with all the direction, we are looking for a better opportunity for our employees and better service for our citizens. We believe that we've done the research, financial logistics, and with, with everything that we've, we've come together by this consolidation, we believe it's better for our employees and it's going to be better for the citizens of Orem. There's going to be a shared staffing model that Chief Sanderson talked to you guys about with the fire department. We'll be able to have basically all the border calls. We'll be able to be transferred and have a quicker response with Provo and Orem and Linden. um, and have a quicker response with Provo and ORM and Linden. Uh, but the biggest thing that we're looking at is the transfer rates. So that's why, how our citizens, uh, get a better service, right? If you're in, uh, a certain area and you call nine one one, uh, you might get Provo dispatch, you might get ORM dispatch, you might get central. Uh, by consolidate, uh, by this consolidation, if a, a phone call comes in, it's coming now to one center. So one center doesn't have to transfer that call to another center. And so by doing so, um, reducing that person that's in dire need of help, instead of transferring them to another center, we're getting that citizen of ORM immediate service and that immediate help that, uh, that we need. And so our employees, uh, will benefit greatly. Um, they will, uh, have an opportunity to have uh, vacation time, holidays with their families. They are working. I mean, we had one dispatcher two weeks ago work eighty hours of overtime in one week. Um, that's a hundred and twenty hour work week. Uh, they're exhausted, they're burnt out. Um, and as administration, the fire department and the police, uh, police department, we feel that this is the best, the best direction for our employees, but also uh, to have that opportunity for our, our citizens to have that better service, so.
Any questions? I do, Mayor. Okay. So I, I just want to be reassured because we, you know, we've all probably had some contact with dispatchers that weren't happy with the process. So are those folks, well, you don't know who those folks are that reached out to us, but how are the dispatchers feeling about this? Is this, is this in their best interest and are they supportive? Because that, that's not everything I'm hearing.
Well, we have two of our lead dispatchers here today that are here in support of it. And if you'd like to speak with them directly, um, you know, you can address them, but, uh, we have done our due diligence as far as making sure that the pay is matched. Um, that they are ma, being made whole, uh, during the shared staffing model and then into the consolidation. Um, but yeah, I would obviously change is hard, um, for anything. These, these employees have been our family for years, and this is, this is not an easy decision that Chief Adams and Chief Sanderson that we are making. But we're doing it in the best interest of the employees and the citizens of ORM. And you know, when you've bled and sweat for an organization, some of them for twenty years, that's hard. That's a hard thing to just say, this isn't your home anymore. And that's, that's a hard thing for anybody. And I think they've all struggled with that and, and rode the wave of emotions. Uh, but the, when you talk to them and you talk about the, the, it makes sense for them and their families. And so, um, that's where we're at.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just say, want to say that this is a, an issue that we've been working on for quite a while. And, uh, like you said, change is always difficult, but this is, in my opinion, in the best interest of the employees and the citizens.
Yeah, I, I have a question. I mean, um, are concerned, just to make sure that, you know, if we get down the road and it's not working, we have the opportunity to pull back and bring it back into ORM. That's correct, so.
So there is a, there is a license that's tied to it. The resolution talks about specifically combining our dispatch rather than consolidating. Um, at the same time, the way we would enter, essentially what this resolution does today is it expresses an intent to move forward in developing a contract where in the short term, we would actually become a customer of Provo and they would provide dispatch services for us while we develop and what we call an interlocal agreement that would essentially establish a, a form of government, governance that would give us a very active, uh, voice in how the operations of the dispatch center happen. So we would go from being a customer to an owner in this relationship. But given where we are right now as it relates to staffing, as it relates to some of the equipment that we have and frankly, the, um, the difficulty we're having in recruiting people, it makes sense for us to consolidate and contract in the short term and then work towards a partnership in the longer term. And by longer term, I mean eighteen to twenty-four months.
And the, the lead dispatchers? You guys are good with it? Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? And like I said, this isn't something we've taken lightly and this is something the city, uh, and the city council has been working on for quite a while, so. Would anyone like to? Debbie?
I move that by resolution, resolution, we express intent to combine ORM dispatched services with Provo dispatch services.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
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 The resolution passes. Jamie, do you have any communication items?
Yeah, I, I just have a couple of things. Uh, Mayor and Council, I talked with you about earlier today about the heritage well and the fact that we had re-commenced the drilling of the well, but unfortunately the contractor eight hundred feet into the ground, lost the drill bit associated with the drilling. I'm happy to report that we've now retrieved the bit and we are drilling once again and we should be done with the drilling, uh, through the night. So as, as you know, it needs to be a continuous process. So always, uh, always not lost, it was found.
And how far, how far, how deep were you drilling?
About nine hundred and fifty feet. So we lost the bit about, or the contractor lost the bit about eight hundred and fifty feet. So we had a hundred feet to go. No, so what happens is they'll remount the hole and then they'll essentially put in a casing and then they'll pack the casing with all of those material, that material that's on site, those bags that are on site. That's what they'll pack around the, the casing to protect the shaft itself and, and to protect the, the well. So after tonight, we won't need to, uh, core down again and, and drill through because we'll be down to the appropriate, uh, I guess you could say width of the, of the hole. So good news. Several of you have, I communicated with you yesterday about city council meeting in November. We traditionally hold one city council meeting in November. It has been scheduled for, uh, November eighth. But, uh, of course, as we know, November eighth is an election day. The suggestion was made that we shift that meeting to a different day. The recommendation was made that we move to November ninth. I've heard from a majority of you saying that November ninth would work for you. So I, I'd like to recommend to you, if you're okay with it, then we'll instruct our city recorder's office to plan on November ninth as the meeting night, which is a Wednesday. And we would, uh, that would be the one council meeting that we will need, that we will hold and schedule regular items for, um, for the month of November. It will be necessary for us though to hold an additional meeting to canvas the election results because we have a ballot question on the ballot this year. We need to actually formally canvass that result. And so we will need to do that fourteen days after the election, which puts, puts us at November twenty-second. Now that is not something that we necessarily have to do with all of you in attendance. We can schedule an electronic meeting and we can take care of that electronically. But I just wanted to say one meeting, one general meeting in November and then a meeting to canvass the election. Yes, and that, and that's by direction, the, the county recorder or the county clerk who conducts the election has represented to us that the final numbers will be available the day of, fourteen days after the election, the twenty-second. So we would have probably received the election, the final election results probably around midday. And I would anticipate that probably towards the end of the day, we would need to hold a meeting for a few minutes, allowing you to canvass the vote. Um, just another note, and I know our, um, our IT director is here, but we are in the process of making changes to our email and our password systems here within the city. As you well know, unfortunately cybersecurity is an increasing threat and we need to make sure that we're protected against threats. And so we're requiring all of our employees, all who have a password to gain access to city resources, city system, your email systems, to have a twelve character password. And that twelve character, and I think Carlo has sent out, or at least Jake has sent out some additional information relative to, it needs to be twelve characters, it needs to include a cap, it needs to include a number, and generally it needs to include a symbol. So all of that is going to be necessary and we're not requiring employees to do it the very next time they log on, but we are giving them a drop dead date. For me, my drop dead date has already passed. For you as a city council, your drop dead date is Thursday at midnight.
Oh, good.
So I'm going to encourage you between now and Thursday at midnight to go into the system when you log on to the login screen for Microsoft. And, uh, you, there's an opportunity for you to change your password. You're going to need to change your password. If you have questions, and I will resend this to you, you can contact Jake in IT or a member of the help staff in IT, and there's even a video that we've provided that allows you to walk through how to change it, so. Seven zero zero seven, two two nine seven zero zero seven. And if, if you get to twelve oh one and you're locked out of your system, just know, give them a call Friday morning. We'll make sure you're taken care of, okay? Yeah, so, yeah, maybe you want to be locked. And finally, we just want to wish, uh, Councilmember Spencer a happy birthday. Wish him many happy returns on his birthday, so. Happy birthday, Dave. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, can I make a motion that we adjourn?
Yes.
I make that motion that we adjourn.
Second.
And we do have some treats for Councilmember Spencer, so you're welcome to grab one.
Aye.
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 Thank you for coming.